He's eaten about half of it. Now, you would think he would have eaten it all, but... I should have said, and I might do it tonight.
Some of it was supposed to be for your boy.
Oh.
You knew that.
And I was trying not to eat it. I was.
I know. That's what moms do.
He didn't eat any of those cookies, though.
He didn't?
Could be because...
You ate them all?
I al- well, I had two, and then the other two I put in a baggie off to the side, and he never saw them, so...
Yeah, because he took them.
I did. Yep. This is one we signed already? No?
No, that's the general fund.
Okay.
That needs to be initialled.
She was telling me about this change, that's right. You know, these pictures are really good considering you took them on your phone, didn't you? Yeah. My phone takes good pics, too. It is 6:29. Well, let's start early. I'd like to call this meeting to order, and could we please stand for the pledge allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, first on the agenda is to approve the minutes of April 15th selectmen's meeting, April 23rd special selectmen's meeting, and April 30th, the selectmen's budget workshop. All right, all in favor? Okay, next I'd like to make a motion to approve warrant 25. Payroll warrants April 16th, April 23rd, and April 30th, 2025. All in favor? Those are all signed, right? Everyone's got them? Leanne, we already passed those over to you? Warrants, great. Cool. All right, reports, RSU 10 report.
I reached out to Chad. He's out of town. It's been very, very busy. Lots going on regarding the budget and having to revisit and cut, and revisit and cut. Super important meeting, the budget. Nobody seems to be in agreeance, except for administration, with the budget, the current proposed RSU 10 budget. So there's a vote up in Rumford on Wednesday, May 28th. They're looking to get a transportation for tri-town residents to make it up there to not only here, but to vote for or against the proposed budget. I know that we really can't afford it. They really need to go back and revisit that. They need to hit the chopping block again. So to get more information, I know Cameron Hinckley's got information, Sumner, anybody, Hartford. But Chad said he will go ahead and hopefully have a report for the next selector meeting.
I'll be going, and I believe all three of us should be going, but if anyone needs a ride, I'm happy for someone to ride with me if they want, or I believe that Buckfield's coordinating some sort of transportation or bus. Yep.
And I'm going. I can give a ride.
See? Perfect.
Tri-town effort here.
Right, so I want to remind everyone that last year, the vote passed on a budget that people were not happy with by 14 votes. That's it. 14. So we want to make sure our voices are heard. Okay, road commissioners' report. Nothing? I know he was doing farmer work this week. He was spreading a lot of... Taking care of his fields, spreading stuff.
He did say that.
I know they did cut a tree, cut a tree that was across the road on the Mahoney Road the other night. I don't know what night it was. Brandy had gone up and took care of it.
Okay, is that the one that somebody reported on Facebook?
Facebook, yeah.
Okay. While we're here at our meeting, I want to remind everyone and everyone at home that even though Facebook is a great tool, that we have a road commissioner and three select board members who might not be on Facebook, and if there's an emergency, like a tree down, they need to make that phone call or text message to your road commissioner or to the select board, because otherwise, we may not know it's on Facebook. And it could be a while before it gets picked up. So that is not the reporting mechanism, please, okay? We appreciate that you've said that for safety on Facebook, but we have a policy and a procedure to report these things. So we need to stick to it, or else somebody's going to get stranded somewhere or whatever. It's fine if you want to put it out there, but you want to make sure that somebody's reached out to the road commissioner. All right, road committee report.
We're compiling another list for you, and 90% of us are saying we might have one or two things that are new.
These are a road priority list?
Yeah, the road priority list.
Awesome. Yeah.
A couple different ones, and then we're going to be talking about the ad hoc committee. We're going to be looking at stuff that we're going to do on Friday. But when we get some stuff, I have to have a meeting with Kathy, because we're on... So before the 13th, I hope to just sit down with you and we'll talk about what's going on. Because then it has to go to you guys, and then you guys, and Leanne can send it out together.
Yep, yep.
Let's just follow that procedure.
Thank you.
So we know when that meeting is, so I can advertise.
Yeah, we'll let you know.
Our meeting between me and you, we just, I don't know, we have to publicize that, too.
Yep.
Let's do it on the 13th.
The day's done on.
Thank you, Rusty.
Thursday? Tuesday?
You're the best, honey. Thank you so much.
Should be all right.
Did you just take a shower, honey? Because you look really wet. Thank you, Al. Constable report. Oh, I'm sorry. Hi. Ad hoc committee, yeah? I'm sorry, it's not on here. But if you'd like to add to it, we'd love to hear you. I'm sorry, I was just going by here. We'd love to hear from you.
Thank you. We had an ad hoc committee last week, and we had some unexpected guests. Nobody informed me that the road committee and the select board committee was going to be there. And those two units seem to take over the whole committee meeting. Is there still an ad hoc committee?
Absolutely. I just came there to take notes, and I know Kathy's on the committee, so...
And I didn't say a word.
What happened, I know you didn't. Thank you. What happened at that committee, it was a new proposal, a proposal that had started at the beginning of our whole search on traffic work. We had two professionals come in and make a recommendation. We voted, we talked about that recommendation, and we moved on. One of the committee members and I went through the whole road, we wrote out a whole bid request, and you volunteered to go ahead and submit.
And update it. To update it, because Diane was not there to do it.
Where is, where is the rewrite?
Well, I'm still waiting for the... The reason I went to your meeting the last time is because I thought that's where we were going to have that whole thing reviewed, and I got there and I didn't know what was going to happen.
The whole issue that was already resolved, and we spent a whole meeting on talking about an issue that we already said would not of good interest for town health. How did that get resubmitted?
I just attended a meeting that was... I thought we were going to review the other proposal. So I was unaware until we got there that there was going to be another proposal talked about.
Who can be there at the meeting tomorrow, at the ad hoc committee meeting?
I am going to be there, Leslie's going to be there.
And we tried to separate the commissioner and the road board. You bowed out.
I did. I didn't want to be in the committee.
We both involved, enrolled, we've done a lot of work on that.
When we lost Burmeister, we lost a couple.
They appointed us. They appointed three of us. We volunteered to do that. And now the rest has been pulled out from under us.
I don't think the rest have pulled out.
Yeah, it sounds like the road committee is going to take over.
We're not taking over anything, but we're...
Okay, all right.
All right, we'll talk about it.
Sorry, tomorrow night, we need to hash this out.
It's a public meeting. Anyone can attend.
Okay, but at the road hoc committee meeting, and if I want to speak, I will invite you to speak. Otherwise, you'll keep your hidden self.
But at the... Hold on, at the last select board meeting, we... Because Paul Burmeister is gone, they asked for two other peoples.
No one informed me of this, none whatsoever, nobody. I had no clue that this was taking place.
If somebody fills out a volunteer form, all they need to do is be appointed. They don't have to ask permission.
And then I had to sign a paper with Leanne, took the ad hoc committee.
No one informed me. I mean, we've been involved in this whole process. These people haven't even been to any of the meetings or anything, and now they're going to jump in and cry at the end of it?
Hasn't Diane been involved?
Well, we've been involved in the same from the get-go.
We've been up and down that road a hundred... Not as of late, we missed a lot of meetings then, a lot of meetings.
Well, it sounds like we have a lot to discuss tomorrow night.
Okay, thank you. We're going to discuss it. I appreciate it.
Thank you. I'm sorry, I didn't... That I didn't call on you. I just was going down my agenda, and I will add ad hoc to our next one, too. You're very welcome. And again, no constable report, all quiet? We like quiet. Yes. All right, code enforcement report. Any questions? Anyone look it over? It's all good? Yeah? ACO report. Animal control. Okay. Planning board just met last night. They probably don't have a report yet.
She does.
Minutes from the prior meeting.
Oh, from the prior meeting. Excellent. Everyone have a chance to look at those planning board minutes, okay, from the prior meeting? Okay, ordinance committee? That's because you've been working like a dog. All those ordinances, holy moly. Firewood report. Do you think we've had any brush fires the last couple of weeks or anything?
I heard of any.
No.
It's so wet.
Okay, church support.
You did see the bank reconciliation for April.
Yep.
I did make a purchase of the salt guard.
Oh, good.
John came and removed the window from the town office. He's going to take that down tomorrow. Purchase now.
Oh, good. John, do you have any idea how long it's going to take for them to repressurize the glass and fix the... I have no idea either. I'm just...
They don't even know if they can do it. They want to look at it first.
Okay. Awesome. Cemetery committee report. It's very wet.
Yeah, very wet. I met with a teacher from Buckfield Hartford Schools and Hartford Center Cemetery, and she has some students that would be interested in helping us out. So we're going to get together, have a meeting Thursday. I gave her some items that we could use to help on in Hartford Center. We looked it over. We're going to get together as a committee Thursday and have a meeting. She's going to attend. And we're planning on having a workshop of whoever permits with the students on May 20.
Excellent.
And while I'm here, I know it's later down in the... On the new business cemetery committee purchase request, I'm requesting allow us to purchase some epoxy to put, you know, put stones, broken stones together, and to epoxy the bases to the headstones, the ones that have fallen over. So that's...
Is that that two-part where you...
That's when we repair stones that are broken, and we send ones up that have broken up the base.
Yeah. I know we've done it.
So one of the part of that workshop, we'll be doing that activity with the students.
Oh, cool.
And that should cost under $300, so I'll be asking for that.
Excellent. All right, solid waste committee, have they met? I don't think they've met yet this month.
No.
I think that's later on. And rec. committee had an event this past weekend. Anyone have a chance to know if they had much attendance?
I don't think I did.
I didn't see any notices out about it, so... Doesn't mean they weren't out there, but I didn't see them. Okay, calendar reminders. Cemetery committee, as Ken just mentioned, meets on 5/8 at 4 o'clock with Buckfield High School volunteer coordinator. Absentee ballots are available May 10th. The rec. committee meeting has a meeting... Rec. committee has a meeting on May 12th at 5:15. Is that Saturday? No, sorry. Ordnance committee has a meeting on the 14th at 6:00 PM. And then on May 20th, the cemetery work with the Hartford, with the students from Buckfield will be working at the Hartford Center Cemetery. Unfinished business, state certified ratio.
So did they include the letter or email for Mike? He's willing to factor in an increase in value each year, $5,000 per year is the cost, but we'll see losing state revenue. He doesn't recommend it, but...
He doesn't recommend it.
Just because it messes up his whole assessing formula. He does have us on the books for a reeval in 2028.
28, which is when we normally would have it. 2028 would have been our next reeval. So let me just understand this. The state wants us to do this. They want us to have a plan to raise property values. Or else they're going to lower our... What they give us, right?
Mike said it's not going to really... It might look like it affects your homestead, but it's not really going to. The only thing it's going to do is prevent Hartford from losing the tree growth revenue next year, 26, which is like $25,000, $26,000.
And he's going to charge us how much?
$5,000 per year. It has to be done each year.
So... And we've got... Would it happen this fall? So it'd be '25, '26, and '27? And we get the tree growth money?
We're getting it this year, but next year, if we don't do anything, he said we'll...
We won't. And that comes in to the town for our budget?
Yeah.
And it's how much per year? $26,000?
He said we lose about $25,000, $26,000.
So you're spending 15 to save 10 or 11?
Nope.
Because we get that every year.
We get that every year, so that's $26,000 for the next three years.
We're going to get it this fall.
Right.
Because everything's like delayed a year.
Right.
But the next two years, we won't if we do nothing. That's what he said.
Spend $5,000 to save $25,000?
Right.
To get $25,000?
Even though it irritates Mr. O'Donnell. Send him a fruit basket, that's what.
That's a no-brainer.
I think that we have to make a motion to do the evaluation. Yep. For the next two years, to save our next three years before we have our evaluation in 2028.
For this year, can I call it the market-based adjustment?
Yes, market-based adjustment.
I'm not sure which one it is.
And that $5,000 would come out of our reevaluation fund?
We put it in the budget to be approved at town meeting.
So, yep, okay.
In administration. Remember, we put $5,000 more in there.
We did. Yep. Wow.
Did somebody second it?
No, seconded it.
Okay, all in favor?
So somebody signed this. I'm pretty sure it's number two.
And this is due first week of June, right? June 2nd or something?
So what's the percentage? So it says...
I don't know. He's going to bring it up enough so we don't lose anything.
So that's he'll determine the amount.
It said market-based adjustment, right?
Yep, so it's in those two. Option two, partial reeval. Because we're not doing a total reeval.
He did bring me one.
I didn't see that. I was looking down here.
Oh, yeah. So option two. Current year, so if I reach the difference, okay, so a partial reeval, so option two isn't. But it looks like these fall under option two. Is that possible? Oh, yeah, you're right. Do I look at that? Just double-check that? Because we're definitely doing a partial. But is that part of option two?
It says option one, into the chosen certified ratio. It's currently here, so I'm outside of 50%. And we have to check one, partial reevaluation, market-based. Yep, that's right.
So there's nothing we have to do with Mike until fall. If the money's approved, then we'll...
Community action grant update.
I would like everyone to congratulate our three-year selection for submitting a grant application, and it was approved for $75,000.
Exciting. Yes. And it's for work in the hall. Correct?
No.
We need bids.
Yes. The bathroom, there wasn't enough detail for them to award the bathroom project.
Yep.
But they do want detailed estimates for the windows, doors, insulation.
So this is a call to action to our community. We need folks, which I'm sure Leanne will put it out again, but we're going to be looking for some estimates to come in, so that the state wants a grant group through community action, would like some sort of idea within that $75,000, how much it's going to cost to get all this done. We had some really rough estimates, so now we need something a little more firm.
Do you want to, like, put it out to bid?
Yep.
It stores windows and insulation, which I had someone look at it. He said this board, what kind of a board this, it wouldn't support the insulation, so it would have to be covered or temporarily covered, supported. I can never give you a number.
It's like a homoset up here, so it's not very strong. It's like it corrugated. So we're trying to get all the work done before we get the floor done? So someone gave us that advice. We really wanted to do the floor first, and somebody said you shouldn't do the floor, and so you get the other projects done.
So you think it would be two bids, windows and doors, and then one for the insulation?
Yep, yep. So we're trying to fix this entry. If anyone's gone through those doors, they are older than our oldest grandparents. They are old. And they don't close well. Sometimes what's happened with a prior select board person, they went and shut the door and the glass broke out of it, and so they really need to be upgraded and easier to get in and out of and more accessible, so I'm excited.
No insulation.
No insulation. Did we determine that there was some blown-in insulation, but it was like down by the floor now?
I thought you said there was none.
Oh, I was thinking I had heard that there was... Oh, I was thinking I had heard that there was somebody, it all gone and condensed all the way down.
Anybody's actually opened up the walls. I don't know.
I don't know. Maybe he took a flashlight, he climbed up in and, so, but...
That's exciting.
It's very exciting.
So when you want the bid, do, I was trying to remember when she said she wanted this.
You can get those out immediately. I would think immediately.
A month or so?
Yeah. We wanna replace the windows. We wanna replace the windows. We don't wanna... Yep.
For the next, going forward, do you want to start the whole process over? Or are there items on the list we could still apply for from the, you know, the public hearings we had before?
Right.
C E B E.
C E B E.
Yep. So she wants to know if we wanna start over, have public hearings and whatnot, and get new ideas to apply for. Do you want to continue on the list of what we already have?
I think we have quite a bit on that list we can still work on. We also know that...
Things like car chargers and...
Probably could.
I was thinking more of sound system.
I don't know if it's...
That's gonna be covered for hearing impaired, I was thinking.
Acoustics need to be modified in here. It's way too tinny. Very echoey.
Yes, Al?
I was just thinking about, you know, they said that they could blow in insulation, but I don't know if anybody still does electrical.
We don't, we're hoping that an insulation specialist is gonna tell us what's the best thing.
Right. Electrical used to be blown in too. It didn't expand, you know, like the foam.
Yep.
It's really good insulation.
We did some blown-in at my old house in Mechanic Falls, but it was the particles, it wasn't the foam.
Right, the particles.
Yep, yep. Okay. Oh, no, we didn't finish. So do you think we need another round of ideas?
It's up to you. We can just keep working on that original list, or we can invite the public to submit new ideas?
I think, I'd like to look at that list, because it's now like two or three years old, and I've forgotten what else is on it.
I know. I brought the list of options. I didn't bring that.
So, that's right. So why don't we give it, we'll, we'll look at the old list, and then we'll bring it up next meeting? Is that okay? Great. All right, garage repair.
The person that had looked at it cannot find a piece of metal that fits. He said it's outdated. He cannot find one. He suggested he could use some kind of silicone and seal around the chimney for now. It would be under a hundred dollars.
I'd say let's do it. Oh, what do you think? Oh, I tried that. I hear John likes tights a lot. Maybe he could go out. Poor John.
It's not, it's not his eyes that the only place you can put a ladder on that bank.
Are we gonna need to rent a bucket truck? Cherry picker?
No, they can't.
No, they can't?
Community service, right?
Right. So, yeah, silicone would be great. Is that person willing to do that?
Yep.
Great.
Just temporary, I guess.
Sure.
Okay. Once it stops the water, that'd be great. All right, town report dedication.
So two submissions. Did you all read them?
Yep. Yep, we picked one, right there.
This one?
Yep.
That's the Spirit of America.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Oh.
Okay.
Dedication, you only had one.
Yes, that's right. Maybe hand that out?
Nope.
There you go.
Love it. Great. Do we need, we don't need a motion, do we?
Yes.
I make a motion that we accept this dedication written by you. Thank you. Nice job.
Yes, I can do it.
All in favor?
That's your copy.
Thank you.
Do we have to vote for that as well? It's not on there?
Okay, Spirit of America Award.
We wanted to write a little blip for Deena for the annual report as well, for all of our hard work. She was nominated for the Spirit of America Award, and we voted unanimously to accept her as the winner. So we wanted to put a little blip in there with her picture in the annual town report as well, thanking her for all of her dedication and hard work.
Helping the Stevens family and some other families quietly along the way. Firewood delivery, helping a woman, Norma, with her well problems and some land stuff. Boy, she's just been everywhere and continues to raise money. Almost every weekend, she's doing raffles to raise money. She just did one for the food bank, and that's why we all felt very passionate about nominating her. So she'll be at town meeting. I've already notified her that she's the winner, and she'll be accepting an award at town meeting. Yep. So I accept, I'd like to make a motion to accept that dedication with the pictures.
Just second it.
All right, all in favor? Great. Next is the select board report for the... No, it's two pages.
Did you grab one from the office? No, that's not...
It's all right. I already read it, because, you know.
Okay. It should look great. It looks great.
All right?
Yeah, it looks great. Good.
Should have to shrink it down. There's a lot to cover.
So I'm gonna make a motion to accept that town report. Just second it.
All in favor?
So this is our annual report. This is updated. I had, I first have the, um, the best of Becky. In the town report, I changed Article 50 to read how the town attorneys stated it should read. So I had to ask them about that.
Yep.
We changed some social service articles. Budget committee members suggested I change the wording that the budget committee and selectmen recommend zero instead of no recommendation. So I changed those, and I think that's about all I've changed. Did you see any errors or...
Not really. So once we're gonna look again tonight, but it looked really good. I didn't even see any, like, typos or spelling stuff. Good job. I know.
Somebody will find some. I know.
I know.
I thought it looked good.
Lot of work went into it. Thank you, Leanne.
So is that okay with the picture?
Yeah, I like the picture. I think that's a nice honor. Now I do agree.
How do you pronounce her last name?
Hoskis.
Hoskis. So last year, thirteen marriages, nine births, and five boys and four girls. That's cool. Fifteen deaths, not so cool. Let's make a motion that we accept the town clerk's annual report. Or we don't need to?
Yep, that's mine. That's my business.
It's all yours then. Yep, great. Okay, we're ready to move on to new business. Review applications for the code enforcement and plumbing inspector. How many did we receive?
Two. I don't know if I put on the agenda, but there's an application in here too for someone instructor that we're gonna have to do with.
Okay.
I just didn't want to lose it.
I don't wanna, I don't wanna do it. Unless we do it before the, before the select board. I don't wanna make these poor people wait and do it after. Or do you wanna do a special interview? Do you wanna do a special time to interview? There's three in here.
No, one is the swimming. We wanna bring Dana in for that, I would think.
We do a Saturday morning?
If we need somebody. I don't even know, was she looking for someone?
Yep, because Rick Turner, is that what her name was? She's pregnant.
Oh, I remember here. Nat, yep. Yep, like she's gonna be delivering in the middle of swimming.
And water birth.
Can you imagine the news headlines?
So what do you guys wanna do for the date? Swim lessons aren't until July, correct?
So. Our next meeting's on the 20th? Do you wanna do interviews before that meeting?
You have to start at like four o'clock. Those people gab. You'll have questions. Yeah, you can't whip those out in two minutes. I'm thinking you're probably gonna have to have a special one. If you wanna do a Wednesday night.
Well, we already have one meeting on the 19th. Well, ATV meets here on the 19th. The 20th is select board, the 21st...
What do you have on the, anything on the calendar for a Wednesday evening open?
The 21st.
The 21st is open?
Wednesday, 21st.
Sounds good. You wanna do that?
Yeah, we start at 5:30.
Perfect.
So a special selectmen's meeting, interviews, 5:21, 5:30?
Please.
Executive session.
Yep. I'm in Tilton that day, so it's gonna be close. Just barely make it. You guys might end up starting.
You can do that.
Mm-hmm. I know you can.
Tilton, won't you?
Yes, we have a story opening. Yeah, I know, it's gonna be a long drive.
Can I just say something that's out of place?
Mm-hmm.
The school kids are coming to help us clean the Hartford beach on May 23rd around 10:00 a.m. John's gonna be there to bring some rakes and stuff. I scheduled the porta potty to be there, but if anybody wants to help, they can come.
So can we repeat that? It's May 23rd?
Yeah.
Thursday.
Thursday?
Be needing parking for the house.
No, May 23rd's a Friday.
Oh, it's a Friday?
Oh, sorry, you have Friday. About 10:00 a.m. they should be there. They're going to the front side of Canton Link first, and then they'll come to Hartford.
And what time?
Around 10:00 a.m.
Okay. And we'll be feeding them?
No, they said they would, after they finish on the Canton side, they'd stop and get their own lunch.
Well, there we go.
You see, last year we fed them.
Okay.
Get one ready.
I haven't really looked at them. I just...
Put them in your cubby.
So we're happy, happy to anyone that wants to volunteer and help on Beach Cleanup Day on the 23rd, Friday before Memorial Day at 10:00. B Y O R. Bring your own rake. All right. We have a new road name proposed for River View Drive.
Yep.
Is it a new road, road? Or is it an old road with a new name?
River View Lane. That is something.
Whoops.
So it's, it's off 140 towards Buckfield. It used to be a state road that kinda looked around and came back on. State discontinued it, and somehow there's two homes, one on each end, with a Sumner Road address. They're putting a home in the middle of those two.
And it needs to have a road name?
Yes, so we have to name that road. I talked to both residents, the old residents, and they said River View Lane. And I already measured the whole road and have the numbers ready. You just have to approve the name.
Do they really have a River View from there?
Almost. Cut a few trees, maybe.
Fair enough. I'd like to make a motion that we accept the new name of River View Lane for that old part of the old 140 discontinued road.
One second.
Okay, all in favor? Will that change the ones on the end from Sumner?
All three of them.
All three, okay. Good.
Which I don't know why they were allowed to keep the Sumner.
Because they were close enough to the ends, but now, yeah. They can't have both ends in the middle. Okay. Moses Young Road Repair to the cemetery. We talked about this last meeting.
Yep. I think Kathy was gonna take pictures.
Did you?
Did I? I'd say, whoops. So the road is in big-time disrepair. It's like... It's really bad.
I did take pictures, but I got my phone with me.
Uh-oh.
You wanna look at them later.
Okay, well, we're gonna need to get it repaired, because people are gonna wanna get up to that cemetery. We, just for thought's sake, we try to keep the roads all repaired to get to our town cemeteries. We, we want people to be able to honor their loved ones, and even if it's not a part of a big usable road, we at least make it passable so people can get in there.
Except for...
Except for the one in the middle of nowhere that is on private land. So, but this, this road's had a lot of washout. You wouldn't be able to bring a vehicle up there for, and we have to maintain... You wouldn't be able to bring a vehicle up there for, and we have to maintain it too, our, Steve has to mow that.
Yep.
So. I wouldn't bring the stang out there, Kathy.
No.
Yeah. That would drag. All right, do we want to look at those pictures? Can you email them to us, or?
Yep. You can.
I just think we need to get it on the plan to get it fixed, especially before Memorial.
So your next meeting is the twentieth?
That doesn't give Bim much time. Can we, I don't know what's gonna be needed.
I know he was up there when he was out spiffing up potholes here and there on dirt roads. Pretty sure he went up there and he did a little bit of work with it, with the...
Oh, did he?
Skids to ya, huh?
He did.
Has he turned anything in yet?
No, nothing's been turned in.
I talked to him till today, he called.
What's that?
I haven't even talked to him until today, he called about something.
Yeah, I seen him the other day, and he said, oh, I haven't turned it in, I'll get to it. Okay.
So.
But yeah, he did go and spit it up a little bit.
Um, Al?
Yes?
Can you, are you free to take a drive up there and see what, if any, work has been done as part of the road committee? Okay.
I'll write up.
Oh, take Wesley. Yeah. Do, he knows where that cemetery is?
Probably, he knows pretty much where I've been.
Okay, yep, thank you, Ken. So, because if it needs a lot more work, we want to be able to put, put some extra gravel or whatever. If he's already done something, we don't have an invoice or know what it is, so.
Why don't I bring the flies up? Put flies on the cemetery, and Wesley and I can go together.
Good idea.
That's a great idea. Don't be killing birds up there.
Thank you.
Okay.
Well, it's turkey season.
It is turkey season. Yep. Rusty's like, no, I'm not hunting turkey. Okay. Road repair.
I was told to put that on there the last meeting.
Is that this one?
I think it...
Is that the suggested road work? What's road repair?
Suggested road repair. These packets are very thick. I don't have that in my packet, and I know I see it.
Jeez.
Thank you.
Just, do you have a copy?
Nope.
And this came in from?
Diane.
Came in from Diane, okay. So the road committee?
Yep.
Yes. Okay.
I think it actually said, but it just doesn't say.
They just replaced, they just put up a sign on Gurney, on Gurney, on Tred Street for blind drives by...
Is that on this list, no?
Is that by the church?
Okay. Okay. So that's done? Is that the sign that was ordered like two years ago, and it's just now going up?
Maybe. It's, they printed up the other day.
Oh, good, okay. So, suggested road work, filling potholes, replace a culvert on top of Gurney Hill Road that was damaged during road grading in the fall, and it's up, and it's, yeah, got a lot of damage, gotta be fixed. I don't know if they're gonna be able to dig and put it down, or whether it's gonna need a new culvert, but, um... It's gonna...
It's the same old scenario, the base of the road's sitting in the water.
Right. And when they grade it, they spread it out, and it's got berms, so it just had, yeah. Okay. Um, reflective sign replacement, fallen signs that need to go back up. And we looked at the bridge on the old 140. We gotta have some reflectors and stuff that looks like either the plows hit the embankments, there's a big piece that's fallen into the water, but we need to have reflective signs so that, especially when it's foggy the other night, you can't see anything. So we gotta protect our constituents. I don't know if we own any reflective signs.
I don't know. I know we, yeah, we have reflective signs for bridges, but they have to be put up, so we want them for...
I jumped into an inventory of signs.
Did you see any, like, yellow or black?
I think that's what they are.
No.
There's a one up, Kathy, a one up on top of Town Farm, or been dug out last year to help it from going across the road. It's just as you go up to it, remember where that really bad wet spot used to be, where the boat caved in? That culvert? It's almost flooded, man, it needs to be a bigger culvert. Look at that culvert there. I think she has the telephone, um, I gave her the information, and I put the telephone pole number on it.
Yep, I haven't got down to that part.
I'm sorry about that.
That's all right. Um, the bridge on 140 has been damaged, that's what we were talking about. Acquire estimates for repair, the one, that big piece is missing, and we need reflective signs there too, because they can't...
I thought we had a plug for, for the ponies.
Right, that's like...
I don't know where they are.
Johnson inventory, they're not there.
Didn't we just buy them last year?
We've made, we made many sign purchases, but I don't have the invoice with me, so I don't know.
Um, another thing is the steps were damaged during plowing out front, so, um, can you talk to Bim about that and see if he can repair that, please? Several culverts on Berry Road that need to be cleaned out, near mailbox 215, Stoneview Lane, mailbox near, the culvert near mailbox 319, and mailbox 448. So, we oughta, I'll get a work order and put this information on it, so we can give it to Bim. Yep, and steps, I'll put that on the work order, but it's repair from plowing. Is that all right with you? Because we have the work order.
For all of this work to be done?
Maybe not all of it, but, but at least some of this stuff, these culverts are gonna cause damage with all the rain if we don't get them.
So you're gonna make a...
Clean culverts?
Have them clean these culverts right here. Have them look at, um, the steps out here. We need to get reflective signs at some point, and if the signs have fallen, we need to put them back up.
So you want me to order signs?
If we don't have any reflective ones.
If you don't have any ones, you should have them, though, I thought we ordered them.
I'll check with her. Maybe Emily still has them, I don't know.
I don't know. I mean, everything should be here until they're put up.
Okay. Um, let's see, on Town Farm Road, the guardrail at the south end near 140 has significant dirt berms not allowing water to exit. Above the guardrail between poles six and seven, the road is getting undermined and is falling in. That's pretty serious.
I think that one there, you...
Is that going up the hill?
Yeah, is it, you need a culvert there.
He said he was gonna do a slash there, but he didn't get to them, so.
Well, that's why it's being undermined, because the water comes down the hill and it's jumping over this dirt spot where a guy has a driver's helmet there, and then it goes down, the road's good.
Yeah, he's gonna do that by, like I showed you the other day.
Yep.
Well, they just have it on the list for over a year.
And then, uh, near mailbox 112, the culvert's three-quarter block, so he's gonna need to clean that. I'll add that to the one above for cleaning culverts.
I think I would just make a cleaning day of all culverts and start there.
Okay.
Just go get all them done.
And then have them go and inspect, because road committee has said several others need to have debris removed after the winter and stuff down, so we'll ask them to go inspect and clean the culverts. But these ones in mind.
These three are approving cleaning of culverts, putting up signs, purchase of signs.
Purchase of signs. Cleaning of culverts, because we, if we don't clean them, and we get a bunch of new culverts, then it's gonna, when the water comes down, it's gonna deteriorate underneath the roads.
So really, you clean culverts on these three roads? Berry, Town Farm, and Mahoney? Steps at the town.
That he should do anyway, because he's, they're the ones who made the...
Look at signs, if we have any.
Is it the steps or the tar?
It's the tar, just, yeah. But underneath that tar, there's pieces of glass and stuff. It's like they tarred over junk.
I moved the pieces of tar over on top of the house, because I told you, I picked up nails and glass, and then I saw more glass.
They just paved over it whenever they did that, it's kinda...
I think it's when they cleaned up the garage.
This one, I think he's gonna take out, because he said it was, it was in a dry area anyways, and there's no water forming. What do you think, Rick, on that?
What's that?
Up past your place?
Yeah.
Where that culvert is on top of the road? You think it needs to be one there, or just the road needs to be built up?
It's actually a spring coming around the road. There's always water.
On that flat?
On that place right there. I don't know what's with the culvert, there's no, no, uh, gravitation of water. I don't know what the culvert's purpose is.
That's what I mean. He, he, he said he might just dig it up.
I think French drains are appropriate. There's water, because I think there's a spring in the road, it's always water.
So have you reviewed, review it and see what a good solution is?
Yep.
Not fix it yet, review and see what's involved.
That was a good time to do it, while it was raining.
Those culverts need to be cleaned. I'm getting orders.
Yep. So for right now, I'll, I'll fill out a work order to clean culverts on these three roads, and then also to see if he can get these steps, get this area in front of the entry fixed, which is caused by their plowing.
You want to make a motion, make it official?
Sure, I'd like to make a motion so that our road commissioner can get assignments out to clean several culverts on Berry Road, Town Farm Road, and Mahoney Road. To prevent damage. We've done a lot of work on these roads, so we certainly want to clean the culverts. Got a second?
Yep.
All in favor? Okay, I'll fill out the work order. Okay?
Thank you.
You might want to look at that one I talked about, needs to be bigger, I believe.
On Town Farm?
You know, a lot of the, all right, this is, you start coming over the hill, where years ago, it always, it always sunk, and well, the spring's down, it's beautiful. I'm pretty sure on that paper, you have a culvert.
Going down the...
It's on Town Farm, right?
No, as you, as you leave it from my house, and you're going up, and you pass the flats, past Bermeister's, and you just start up that hill a little bit, there's a culvert that comes across the road. Last year, you dug it out, and you made a nice turning for it, but it's just not big enough to take all the stuff. The bigger the culvert, the stuff can go through easier. But I don't think it's...
Right in that area too is, right in that area, one of them storms washed that, right in that area out, washed that guy's driveway out.
Exactly, but that guy, that culvert was flooded, and now that culvert's getting flooded again, so you're...
Is that the one you said that was between poles six and seven?
I believe so.
Road's getting undermined and is falling in?
No.
No, it's on the tide path, going down over the...
She knows where I'm talking about.
Other hill, yep.
If you look at it, you'll see, the bigger, you need a bigger pole, I believe, you need a bigger pole.
Um, one thing we will need to do right away, Leanne, is we have to use up that culvert money.
Yeah, I just finished, I just submitted the final report, it was due April 30th, to obligate it, and...
Yep.
But it has to be spent by December 26th.
Yeah.
We want it better. We have to deal with it.
And we, we'd like to have those culverts delivered down here, so we can keep track of where they're going and...
Up in the garage.
Or next to the garage, so that we can keep an eye on them, and, yep. All right, Oxford County Tax Commitment.
We don't have to start paying up for it since September, but they want it signed.
Is it gonna be the right number this time, or are they gonna adjust it 60,000 again?
Do you have a copy of the question?
Yeah, I need a motion to accept it.
And so it's, um... Evaluation is 13, 18, 9, 350, and the tax assessment is 15, 257, 776 for the whole county. And Hartford's portion is 225,300. Tax assessment's 260, 633. Ouch.
All right, so you're gonna make a motion to accept it.
Can we make a motion not to accept it? We have to accept it, don't we?
No, no, use coverage, you know.
All right, so I make a motion that we accept the, the county assessor's tax commitment.
Thanks, Ken.
All in favor? Do you want to fill in the date and time on there? Next, we have the Cemetery Committee purchase request, and that's for the epoxy repair. They think it's gonna be near 300.
It should be under 300, but I'm like, you approve up to 300?
Yep.
I call today, what we usually use is out of stock. They don't have much left, so they're gonna call me back, and I might have to do a substitute. What I usually use is around 120, the next step up is gonna be over 200.
Okay. And this funding is coming out of the cemetery reserve, which is there for you to use for this very purpose. I'd like to make a motion that the cemetery committee spend up to $300 on the cemetery epoxy repairs for the stones. All in favor? Okay. You're welcome. Generator maintenance.
I was contacted to see if we wanted to schedule a maintenance appointment, but haven't they already been out in, just a few months, couple of months ago, they did a bunch of work, didn't they?
Mm-hmm, yeah.
We don't have it in the budget, so...
Should be offset till December, so...
They probably were calling down their list to see, keeping them busy for the summer. But I'd say they've been in, they've been down here two or three times this year, so... All right, veteran flag placement at the cemeteries. We do know that you guys are gonna go do that one.
Yeah, I'm gonna do Blubber, that's on Moses.
Yep.
And we'll do Hartford Center, we'll have our workshop over there with the students.
Oh, that'd be great.
And I don't know if you, Rusty, Kathy want to do others?
Yep, Rusty and I want to take some.
We'll do Maple Grove. Girls, I'll second one of the others.
Sure, absolutely.
So Blubber, Hartford Center, and Elliot's always been Maple Grove.
Okay.
I'll do those three.
Let's ride the others. I want to do the one up on Gurney Hill, we love that one, we talked to all the group and...
They all need spring cleanup from our contractor.
Yep.
That is the cemetery, a lot of sticks, a lot of branches.
A lot of sticks and branches, yeah. Hopefully, um, his last payment for this year, fiscal year is in June, right? So, yes.
Um, just wanted to, I don't know if you know, but Cindy redid the whole list, we typed it with all the flags to family members, to the privates.
She did?
Yep. Much better than my...
Cindy Vail-Lect did that?
Yeah, Cindy did it last year. Yeah, Cindy did it last year.
Sweet.
Should be dither.
Yeah, cuz it was.
Yeah, it was.
It was, still had something to go by. Sometimes you get to a cemetery.
It went by with flags.
And you had no idea where stuff was, and we had handwritten notes, which were great.
Well, I did it for like 15 years, so I just, I was the only one who ever saw that, so I just made all kinds of notes.
Hey, it was very helpful, though, when we were looking for, we knew it, there were seven, and we only had six, so we started going row to row to find the seventh one.
That's why I like leaving the markers in the box.
Yeah, right.
Yeah.
Yep.
But then the window is just something you want.
That does work pretty good.
I do wanna mention that, um, over in the Oxford Hills, the veterans group over there has additional flag markers if we need any. I reached out to them last year to get a couple, and they have some if we need any, okay?
I know we have a few. I don't know, Leanne, do you have any at all?
There's a few and.
Yeah, we don't have many.
Hope you got to get some.
Okay.
Well, I can't keep cutting the budget. I don't have enough money.
No, I'm gonna go, they just offered some to me from there, so I'll go.
Get it while it's, do a grabbing, please.
Yeah.
Get it while it's going.
Well, I asked for two last year, so they reached out to me and said, you gonna want any more of those this year? I go, weesh, that's my. Because we don't have a veterans, formal veterans group here, so. Great, ordinance certification, building permit ordinance, administrative ordinance, Part II solar ordinance, junkyard ordinance, planning board ordinance. And I'd like to make a motion that, I'm assuming you all have read, they've already approved before. So I'd like to, uh, sign off on those, approve those, so that we can get them in the book. Yep, to be voted on.
Can I just ask, Darryl, if you had any issues with any of them?
No, I looked through them and it doesn't look like there are a lot of it, um, changes from the water.
And I talked to the attorney briefly today about, he thought I was calling about the junkyard ordinance, but I, it was not that, but, um. He made a comment that we'd done a lot of work and I couldn't take credit. I said, oh, the ordinance committee and Darryl did a lot of work, so thank you again so much. So, all in favor?
There's five over here. I need you to sign a certification brief.
Yep, do you need like a cut on my finger and some blood, or you're all good?
We could do a new stamp.
Yeah, stamp. She said, we're gonna have to stamp. Yeah, you start with that one. Is that all five?
Would you also mind signing this notice of the public hearing, which includes the ordinances, if I can post that?
And the public hearing is on June 3rd.
We're on the corner.
I know. Month away. Okay, Annual Town Meeting Warrant Approval.
I told you which articles I had changed.
Yep.
I hope you guys read through it. I don't know if you missed anything.
I didn't see anything, but sometimes you just don't know what you don't know. But it looks good to me.
You still wanna get rid of comprehensive plan? I think that was.
Yep, yeah, because we don't have a growth zone, so we don't have to have the, uh.
We talked, we talked the other night about having the town vote for removal. Repealing the old and starting anew.
Yeah. I wasn't there.
That's what we had talked about. Had we, Darryl? The town was gonna vote on whether or not to keep, repeal the old comprehensive plan.
And start new.
Is that in the ward?
I think so, and we didn't take it out.
Was that what you were asking, to take it out?
No.
Oh, okay.
I was trying to make sure.
Yeah, that's, that's in there to vote on.
Yep, to repeal the 2008. And the no spray or E5 spray. Hey, if you're okay with it, I can make minor changes tomorrow and that's it.
Okay. Oh, you spelled my name wrong.
Oh, well.
Just kidding.
Oh, well.
Oh, well. So I make a motion that we approve the annual town meeting warrant.
Thanks, Megan.
All in favor? Next is the Hartford Happening, so I'm not ready, but I will be by the end of the week.
And the next week's time?
Oh, yeah.
And then I'll put a link to the town report in the.
Yep, perfect. I have to, I think I mentioned it in the email after, pull some information for permit and stuff. All right, appointments and resignations. Nothing? Great. Any training? All right, review correspondence? Nothing new? Love that. Okay, agenda items for next meeting.
We talked about the community action grant list.
Yep, community action grant list we're gonna review. Cemetery flags, we.
We need to do that sooner. She's gonna tuck the cemetery flag list in the mailboxes.
Yep, yep. We wanna make sure we keep an eye on, making sure that all the cemeteries are ready too, but we can do that while we're out there. I was about ready to call on you. I saw that hand. I was gonna make an assignment. You want something? We're gonna put stuff, you're gonna put something out there about getting bids out for. We can share it.
I'm just thinking the hearing's gonna be right after that meeting. But I think we're all set for that.
You mean to review all the ordinance changes, everything else? Okay, open session. Anybody have anything, except for I wanna know how Lenny heard her arm. It's a beautiful cast, though.
Dogs, squirrel, wet ground.
The ground's wet?
Dog, this is two weeks old.
Dog.
Right.
Anyway, um, the arm is not wet.
Oh, no.
I just wanted to request a slight rubber for the armpits. Wait for the next meeting. Here, remember who's stirring it.
Okay, one man, one of the. The one we adjusted for the book. We're good. Take exercise, it's a whole year worth of stuff in there. We can revise that, put it in. Yeah, we're good.
Good.
We're good?
We're good, we'll do it. Anything else for open session? Yes, sir. Hi, how are you?
Good evening. This is the third year anniversary of the town trespassing onto our land again. I wish to inform the residents of the town that if they want to destroy your property, they can. I want to inform the residents that if they want to destroy your property, they can. The town has no interest in reparations to the damage to our property, almost $100,000. The town has no interest in getting off our property since they trespassed 18 years ago. If the town wants to destroy your property, they can. No easements, no permissions was ever given to the town to come on our land. For $2,500, you would have never heard about this, especially taking to repair. Instead, the town wants to spend your money to go to court. When Susan Dulay and Kathy Lowe visited our property in 2003, they saw the damage. But the first letter from their returnee was to deny it existed and that they have no idea that this property exists on Ricker Hill Road. We were anxious. Susan Dulay said that we need to do something. Kathy Lowe, when she came to me to hear her vote, said we need to do something. They have all chosen destruction of a retired used property, not to protect or help its brother. Let's hope that you're not on the select person hit list like the people on 140, where they're driving, cut in half with an open ditch by our road commissioner in his friend.
When did you become a select person, Sue? Because you weren't even a select person in 2003.
2023.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, Jason?
So, um. I know that this time of year DOT does sweeping by bridges and whatnot, and they're always looking for places to dump that sand. I know it's pretty soft and it doesn't pack down very well, but is that something that you could possibly request for, like, fixing that road going up to that. Graveyard that never gets used for anything but once a year? Could we ask the town, the state to drop off some free sand and?
I don't know if they do that.
Of course they do. I filled out an application every year and they dropped them off. And I'm a resident. I think that the municipality was to ask them to get it first.
Can you ask the road commissioner to contact them?
Get free?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I do wanna mention that every person in this room matters. We are in an active case. We're not allowed to talk about the, uh. About what, the, uh, the topic that he was discussing, so we're not allowed to say anything, or else we would. Okay, is there anything else for open session? Great, I would like to call this meeting adjourned and thank you all very much for coming. I appreciate your time. For those people that are accessing dumpsters, they're gonna be pulling those shortly for seasonal. Seriously, about this time of year that, that they decide, they don't tell us. They just come and pull them and find out by the after. So for anyone that's, um, accessing seasonal dumpsters, they're gonna be pulled soon. They always are this time of year.